September fourth. First thing we have on the agendas, a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Lee, would you lead us in that?
Yep.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Everything on the agenda good, Annalisa?
Except for the minutes, yeah.
Except for minutes, okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. Got the motion to approve the agenda and set it for today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First item is Marlo Stevens'. Business license.
Please dial a one when dialing this number.
Thought it was your cellphone, didn't you?
Hello?
Marlo?
Yes?
This is Rich County Commissioners.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing well, doing well. Thank you for taking time to meet with me today.
You're welcome. What you got going? Tell us a little bit about what you're thinking.
Uh, so no problem. Bryce Nielsen and Jim Stone, both of whom have previously guided on the lake have uh, are either retired or have been in the process of closing up things. And I've been on the lake and doing a lot of aid activities and things with uh, with taking people out fishing since about ninety-one. And kind of to a point where thought maybe we would acquire a business license and do it a little more professionally, so Bryce suggested and made an offer that I reach out to Rich County to be able to get a permit to operate.
Okay. Um, looks like you're so, are you the employee?
Yes, I'll be sole owner. I have an LLC, so I'll be the one and only.
And you're licensing to do it every all twelve months out of the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will you be using the marina to uh, as your, as your base? Where will you be, what's your base of operation?
Uh, primarily although right now it's obviously a little tough because they don't open until six, but once they, once the formal season kind of winds down as far as tourists go and they leave it open, it will be, so I've, I will uh, leveraging their assistance there for meeting tourists or whatever that's coming to go out on the boat, but right now it's first point, which doesn't have anything formalized, so.
Okay, so do you have any kind of an agreement with state parks for you to allow you to do that?
They actually asked that I complete my uh, request through Rich County first, and I've got my LLC insured with them, and so with that and my capital license that I've completed, um, I just wanted to kind of make sure I had everything in back in a row and then would uh, would approach the Utah State Park to be able to operate from the marina if that was uh, I think that's kind of the last step in finalizing everything.
Okay. Do you have anything?
Nope, I don't have any questions, and I'll make a motion that we approve a business license for blue water charters.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to prove, approve blue water charters for a business license. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, I guess you can get with the clerk to for payment on that.
Okay. We'll talk to them later today, thank you very much.
Yeah, I will, I can follow up with you later this afternoon, or you can give my office a call. Do you need their number?
Well, I think I've got it, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Okay. Brian? Bring up who, who and everybody you want.
Thanks for letting me come through my spiel to you guys, give you this. So just some examples that I had printed out for talking to you guys about this. So this stems from House Bill eighty-five and trying to get school resource officers put in schools. Um, but in looking at that and the discrepancy between
Oh, sorry. Can you identify yourself for our record?
I'm Deputy Brian Wilmore, I work for the Rich County Sheriff's Office under Sheriff Stacy.
Sheriff Dale Stacy.
Deputy Thomas Walberg.
Okay.
And so in trying to figure out how the sheriff's office is going to coordinate with the school district and getting school resource officers, um, it start looking at pay for deputies in the sheriff's office and we're gonna have a hard time getting anybody to come up here to work because of the discrepancy the sheriff's office has paid compared to the rest of agencies throughout the state. Just from a personal example for me, I could go anywhere else and be making ten plus more dollars an hour. And living up here in Rich County, I enjoy it, but the cost of living is higher, and with what I make from the county, it's it's near impossible for me to live up here on my own without my wife working. And so we're gonna have a hard time getting other qualified people to apply to hire um, school resource officers, so. Um, come up to kind of start pointing out examples of what other agencies are making, and I gave some information on some of the surrounding agencies, and that's only a small snippet um, of what other agencies are paying and some of the signing bonuses that they give. And that doesn't dive deep into kind of what those other agencies have to their benefit to their officers where if they get a case, they can pass it off to investigations after they originally do it. We're up here, if we get a case, we have to follow it through to the end. Um, we're on call almost ninety, oh correction. Um, we're on call for ninety-six hours out of our ten days on. And so that means out of ten days, we're working ninety-six hours on call, we're out patrolling the streets, a minimum of seventy-two, and that doesn't include the callouts or overtime that we do. So out of those ten days, we only have seventy-six hours that are actually our time so that we could go out of the county somewhere, because when we're on call, we're expected to be close to our patrol truck and be able to respond immediately when we're requested. And so in kind of lieu of trying to get school resource officers, we need to address the pay of the sheriff's office in order, I think, to make it competitive and be able to get qualified applicants up here to actually work. So. It's and I've talked to Sheriff Stacy about this, and he's in support of me coming to request, you know, start looking at this in order to get deputies, both the patrol and then the ones, the nine-one-one dispatchers and the corrections officers, an increase so that we can actually hire enough to do the job up here and protecting the community. And now on top of that, the schools.
I know I had one quit and go to the prison, and she made nine dollars an hour raise going from here to prison.
And they include signing bonuses. If you complete their program, their field training program, they give you three thousand dollars, and then if you make a two-year commitment, they will give you six thousand dollars. And a lot of them pay for the type of experience that you've had. Just most places I see that have their base pay is starting between twenty-six and thirty an hour.
So like on this cash account, the sheriff, sheriff's office pay plan, are there steps, the years, is that what they call years?
Yeah. Yeah, and they usually have a, a max that they'll pay out too. Some of them are eleven, some of them are fifteen years. And I think the reasoning for doing that is they want you to promote once you actually get inside the agency.
The step pays a base for, if you just remain as just a patrol officer, that doesn't include any specialized training.
You've maxed out at fifteen.
Exactly, yeah, that doesn't include like if you were SWAT or an investigator, um, canine handler and things like that, that's, they all, they all pay additionally on top of that. So that's the, the base of where it begins at, and then you get your other adjustments on top of it.
So a brand new deputy with step zero, twenty-seven dollars fifty-six an hour.
Correct, that's straight out of the academy.
And a lot of those agencies will pay, they'll hire somebody that's not LEO certified and put them through the academy, so they will start paying them the day they start going through the academy and pay for their schooling as well and their training. Where other, other people self-sponsor and they can get reimbursed for some of that, but not always. Like in, in my circumstances, in there it shows corrections pay and for adult probation and parole. With my experience of almost fifteen years, I could go back and work for them making more than fifty dollars an hour. Where here, I'm currently making twenty-nine fifty. So I'm, I could go anywhere else and be making that much, just starting out.
How many years' experience did you say you have?
Fifteen.
This is, this is a highway patrol. I had to start, join now, thirty-four fifty-eight.
I called and spoke with uh, my former lieutenant from the South Salt Lake Police Department where I worked before, they're currently starting at thirty-two. And they'll put you through the academy, and he offered me forty-seven, plus my seniority back if I'd come back right now. Um, so that the pay is substantially different. I believe I'm at twenty-five oh one here.
And I, I know that there's, there's been discussion before about keeping all county employees kind of on the same pay scale. And bringing this, I know it may seem that we're trying to say that we're better than any of the roads crew or, or um, sanitation or anybody else. We're not, we're just extremely different on what we're required to do. Where for at least four days, I'm on call for the entire twenty-four hours, so at three AM, I get called out and it's not, oh, well, I'll take care of it in the morning. Majority of the time it's, we do have to go out and solve problems. Not always, there are times where certain calls can be handled the next day, but when somebody crashes into a fence because of a DUI, it's not something we can follow up on the next day. We have to go out and those, those cases take at least three or four hours to start sorting through. And that's just the beginning of it.
Yeah. So I definitely see a um, um, a recipe for low morale, you know, with the type of shift work schedule that, that Rich County Sheriff's Department has, combined with lower pay. You know, we're lucky that turnover hasn't been much higher. So I understand what you're saying, that it's, we gotta, we need to address that, and, and you're absolutely right, where county employees have always been tied together. The, the responsibilities of deputies are, are different, and, and I would argue they're probably much, much higher than, I don't think you're gonna offend the roads crew or sanitation by saying that. You know, and, and the risks are much higher for you guys, so we need to probably separate uh, those pay from each other when we're discussing raises.
I know a lot of agencies, they are separate from any other of the county or, or city workers in the jurisdictions that they're in.
Yeah.
So.
And all three of us back on July tenth, um, we're messaging that this is something that, that we're, we need to discuss, and it's, because we, we shared that same screenshot of the highway patrol.
And that's, it, it's hard doing law enforcement work just in general, but doing it up here in this county, coming from working at the prison, supervising people on probation and parole, it is a lot harder up here. It's more dangerous because if something happens, typically we're the only deputy out. Now, we have other law enforcement in the county that constantly back us up, but that shouldn't be the norm, it should be the exception that if we don't have enough people there helping us as a department, I feel like we should be relying on our own deputies to handle the issues throughout the county ourselves. And having the local agencies be able to back us up when we need them, instead of relying on them constantly as sometimes they're our only backup in, in, unless we call somebody out from their time off.
So in an ideal world, then, um, are you thinking that we need to increase our force by at least two to three deputies and and maybe have starting wages in the neighborhood of thirty dollars an hour? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, I think so. Um, I mean, as far as the school resource officers go, we're gonna the, the state legislator has mandated that we need either a school resource officer, a armed guardian, or school security there when the school's in session. Currently with our, with our department, if we take two deputies and put them in the school, the other deputies are off, so we're not gonna have somebody out patrolling the streets taking care of those issues, and once those school resource officers are established in the schools, they can't leave to go help with a traffic accident or something else unless it's, you know, something critically emergent. But even then, they don't want those officers out of the school long-term.
Right.
And up here in this county where in the summertime, that's when we have our influx of tourists, those school resource officers would also be able to help during the summer, cover shifts and give us that extra needed help. So I think a minimum of at least two, but in, in an ideal world, I think if we could get four more deputies, and I haven't talked to Sheriff Stacy about the number, but I think at least four would start alleviating a lot of the issues and making it so in the wintertime when things do slow down, the deputies will be able to take time off and use their vacation or sick ti- or vacation time to go do the stuff in the winter that they're not able to do during the summertime. Because pretty much in the summer, I don't, we don't take any time off. If we do, it's a couple hours here, there, or a day or two. So, and I know it's been brought up in the past, the amount of vacation and sick that some of the deputies quit and leave with, and it's, it's really hard to take time off knowing that if I leave, it leaves my partner without a back. Not saying that other deputies won't cover, but it puts the added burden on them that now when they're supposed to be off, they're expected to do at least be around that they can cover and help back up, just so that somebody can take time off. So. And
And maybe he knows. We haven't discussed this a great deal, but I think the school is responsible to pay for some of this in the school.
Yeah. It's a negotiated price, you know, between you guys.
Yeah, while they're in the school, but then, like you said, then in the summer when we're busier, they would be freed up from the school.
And, and we are still working out a lot of the details with House Bill eighty-five and how to get all that arranged, and Brian Tumer is here from the school, he's their school security liaison that I've been working with, and uh, there is state funding at least for the first year, but after that it runs out and then becomes either the county or the school district's responsibility to keep funding those deputies if we go the school resource officer route.
Generally from what I've seen working at other agencies, the school resource officers are usually funded at least half or more by the schools themselves. Um, there was an issue when I was with South Salt Lake where um, the school district down there decided they weren't going to pay it anymore, and the school resource officers were pulled out of the schools, and it only lasted about three months before they realized the need that they really had to have those officers in there, and they renegotiated and gone back in. Um, so it's generally a burden that's shared by that, as, as you all know, but the bulk of our taxes goes towards the school districts. Um, so it's a large portion of our funding already goes there.
I have talked to Superintendent Lamborn, and, and he is on board with, he would like to see school resource officers in the school, and um, he is willing to add money to that in order to make it happen, and we just haven't got a final number on what portion that would be, but they, the school district is willing to support helping get more deputies so that they can have the school resource officers in the school.
Are we talking both schools?
Yeah, it would, it's per campus. We would have to get written exemption for the Bridgeline one, but we could have one deputy at South Rich and then one at North. And this kind of just scratches the surface of what we're trying to address to get fixed and kind of bring it before you guys, and so we're happy to answer any questions that we can. And if there's more information that you would like to see, we can also get that as well.
So you guys, um, you put in your full shift. Is that ten hours or?
They're eight.
Eight-hour shift.
Basically, we're on from three in the morning till three in the afternoon, and then three in the afternoon till three in the morning is when we have to cover.
That's your
That's our, that's when we're
On call.
Yeah, and then we're supposed to put eight hours in, in, but somewhere within that twelve-hour period. Um, actually be out on patrol and on the road. So it's actually technically a twelve-hour shift, we just have to be out for the eight.
So I think, um, giving you guys like a ten-dollar hour raise would be awesome. It's not gonna, it's not gonna solve the, the long-term problem. We need, probably need a step. We probably need our own step system of what, what people are gonna be paid, something that we could follow that's divorced from the rest of the county employees.
It's also an incentive to look forward to also, because
Yeah.
um, generally, usually about the ten-year mark for law enforcement is when most guys basically say they've had enough and they get out. The problem is that's the officers you want to stay because they're the ones with the experience, and they're the ones who are usually vested in, in the, in the uh, system. But it is absolutely hard on your body. There's a reason why the, the state does a twenty-year retirement for law enforcement versus thirty for everybody else. It's not because the state's being generous, it's because they know that statistically law enforcement officers, retired law enforcement officers die earlier. So the, the amount of stress it puts on your body, the lack of sleep, uh, the things that you see, the, you know, the trauma that you witness, it takes a toll on you and then basically they, they retire and then they, they suffer what's called retire-ney. They get retired finally, and then they're dead within a couple years. And the state knows that, and so that's why they tell you you can retire earlier, try to be generous, but in actuality, they know it's because it's on their end of it from a fiscal standpoint. They're basically saving that money still because they know you're not gonna make it.
It's a pretty gloomy picture.
It is, it actually, it is.
Holy cow. Work twenty years and then die in two.
Yep, it's, I, I can personally think of at least three that I've worked with down in the city that retired, and they're already, they've already died.
I know a couple of them.
That's crazy.
I don't, there, that's why I keep hanging on that every time.
Yeah, we got a problem here we gotta address for sure.
Yeah. Well, nobody in, no deputy or law enforcement officer that I've talked to expects to get rich doing this job. But it takes a special kind of person, and doing it up here, there is more danger because we have less law enforcement officers, backups farther away, and the amount of people that we see in the summertime. I mean, just this past summer, there were a couple days in a row where right around July fourth, where I was going from one call to the next, my entire shift. And then staying out an extra four or five hours to help either with busy holidays like the fourth or twenty-fourth, or just trying to help people catch up on calls. It's I like, I like working up here. It's, it's a, it's a good environment, but I'd need to be able, I need to be confident that if I'm not at home, my family's taken care of, and that it's worth it making that sacrifice away for my children when I'm out helping other people.
That's fair.
So, and I mean, I can't, I can't afford to buy a house in Garden City with what I make here. That, and that includes with my wife working, just because the cost of living is so much. And I would love to establish up here, to be here long-term, but it's, it's really hard with the prices over there to be able to afford even just a basic house. So I live rent from my brother-in-law, and he's pretty much the reason why I've been able to stay up here as long as I have, because he takes good care of me and he does help. I think he, he charges me less for rent than he could anybody else who he had staying there, so.
Okay. So I see this as pretty critical, probably need to move pretty fast, but I don't know what you guys think. I, I think we probably need to develop a step system of compensation like this month.
Okay.
Um, with your guys' input. And, and then obviously we're going into budgeting, but it's something that I would like to implement fa- faster, um, but that's just me.
I'm willing to get more information if you guys see something that you wanna look at or help any way that I can, and I know Sheriff Stacy and any of the other deputies would be willing to.
Look, like, I just looked at the caches, looks like they, they bump them like just a couple bucks at ea- for each year.
And that, that's for their experience. I, I don't think that one specifically includes the cost of living. That's just for the year increase.
So they change it year by year for cost of living, right?
Yeah, that adjusts.
They changed it over the years.
Yeah. That's about two dollars each year.
Yeah, it sucks you go to buy some cream and it's eight dollars, you know?
Especially in Garden City, it'd be ten.
Yeah. I'll get it wherever I can now. I can't find it anywhere.
Yeah, well, we need to have some look at it. It'll be about eight hundred thousand for four of the deputies, and if we give everybody a ten-dollar an hour raise as of today. So, um, we're generating about one point three million in property taxes, so we'll have to do about a thirty percent property tax increase. Generate that. And that takes a process, and um, so we need to make some decisions here pretty quick if we're gonna have um, notices to do a property tax increase, so.
Yeah, we definitely need to run the numbers. I'd say run them sooner rather than later though.
When a lot of the houses up here, well, at least in Garden City and Lake Town, they're short-term rentals, so a lot of those people that are paying their property taxes, it's going to the school. They don't have kids that are going to the school. And I don't want it to sound like we're, I want the school to get less money, but
The school's not gonna get less money.
Yeah, I think that's mandated.
The community, I think, would benefit from having more deputies up here, being able to respond a lot faster to some of the issues that come up, especially when we're not out and we're just on call. A lot faster to some of the issues that come up, especially when we're not out and we're just on call.
Of course, there would be some adjustments there that we could probably like add because. If we increased by four deputies in, overtime would certainly go down. Um, so we can make some adjustments there, so it wouldn't be maybe quite that much, but, um. You know, the, the cost for a deputy at thirty dollars an hour, just a beginning deputy with, with the. Retirement and the benefits you've got. You know, you're about a hundred and thirty thousand per deputy at thirty dollars an hour. So.
Yeah, I think four would be swinging for the fences. I think starting out with two and then having the school subsidize. A good chunk of those resource officers is probably a good place to jump in. But Bill's really good with numbers, so I'm sure we can figure it out between all three of us.
School committed maybe up to a minimum or a maximum of seventy thousand. That was, that was they.
Per deputy or for both?
And that, and that's because they have some funding available from the state. If that goes away, then it would be less.
That's our job to figure that out.
But that's it.
Happy to bring that up with the school as well, cause I mean, I, yeah, I'm willing to talk to them. And I will be, as we get the House Bill eighty-five up and going and everything implemented, so.
In just a couple of weeks, we're going to some more meetings on this and.
Yeah.
You have anything to add, Mr. Tumor for about being in the school?
Just to follow up, um, the, the first year, we do have a fair amount of funding that we can contribute. Towards the school resource officer. The next year, that, uh, is all gone away, so. That would have to be negotiated on what, what they can and can't do there. And I, I don't have those numbers. We have to get the business manager and superintendent work through that.
Yeah, I'd rather have the school raise their taxes and yell that than us, you know, but. The problem has to be solved, you know, it's not gonna go away. And pretty quickly.
Yeah, it's only getting busier in Garden City and around the lake every year. This year was unbelievable how busy it is. So I think it's gonna have to change for everybody over there, including you, Dot. It's gonna have to start figuring out road issues and. It's just getting to where traffic's a nightmare, so it's unfortunately we've been discovered.
Yeah, and even in the wintertime, I think more people are coming up here for snowmobile trips where they can. Get cheap houses and be able to be ten minutes away from really get snowmobiling and skiing and.
Well, and a lot of people have told me they're working remotely now. Covid kinda started a thing. So they're not all going home like they used to. Sweetwater Hill has a lot more lights on than it used to in winter time. They're, they're sticking around a little more.
And I think you have a lot of primary residents that don't move there. Primary residency up here because it is so cheap second taxes. Doesn't make a lot of sense for them to flip that around.
We responded to a fraternity party last, uh, I think it was February. Um, these were some guys from University of Utah and they were paying a hundred and thirty bucks a night for. Uh, eight thousand square foot house with ten bedrooms. And they were all drunk as can be and. But the first words out of their mouths is we heard there wasn't any police in Garden City. So pe- the word's getting out and it's starting to become a, a destination for partiers, which.
Cause it's real cheap in the winter.
Yeah, we wanna avoid that. That same house rents for two thousand a night in the summer, so.
I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, let's have a follow-up in this next month.
Appreciate you guys' hard work.
Thank you, yeah, we do appreciate you. Stick around, we're not done yet. See you there.
Okay, Mitch.
Okay, we'll start with, uh, Mitch Bolson. I'm the, uh, planning administrator for Rich County. We'll start with the, uh, plat amendment. Uh, change the plat amendment process. Uh, I was in here last month talking about this briefly, but essentially what we're. Trying to achieve here is that, uh, Rocky Mountain Power contacted me a few months ago about our plat amendment process. And they requested that, uh, applicants get a, uh, get a cert- or have a, um, a utility locator come out. Identify the location of their utilities and then have that surveyed as part of the plat amendment process. I think what this is doing is helping, uh, utility companies, and it's not just Rocky Mountain Power, it's other utilities as well. Uh, that may be affected to identify the, the actual location of their utilities, cause they, they went for years without locating them. And now all of a sudden they're going, well, we're not exactly sure where these are at. So as part of the process, um, I brought to the planning commission, we talked it over. Um, our first go-around was, uh, was close, you know, we requested that they get ahold of. Uh, Blue Steak to identify those utilities. Uh, and Tyler, our, our, our county engineer said. Uh, Blue Steak will not respond to an engineer, they just have too much going on. And so we changed the language in our plat amendment process. Uh, so it says, this is, uh, on the second page, it's underlined, it says, very utilities will be located by a service provider. We don't care if it's Blue Steak or some other, some other group. Uh, it has to be surveyed and identified on the plat as a public easement. And so this is, this is a responsibility of the landowner, um, for them to get this taken care of and identified. So that was the only change that we made to that.
So what would this make them? Does this, does this suffice as to what they're, they feel like would help them out?
Yes, it would. Yeah, we held a public hearing on it, a planning zoning last month. It was advertised, um, around the valley at the, uh, the different, uh. Locations that we can post such as post offices. We put a, a notice up here in the courthouse. And, uh, we did not have any public show up to give testimony on this, uh, change.
Uh, should we get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the plat amendment, uh, the plat amendment.
Okay, second that motion.
Okay, motion to have that addition in the plat amendment ordinance modification. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second one is the Rich County Alternative Energy Ordinance. And we'll walk through this one, uh, rather than speed through it. Um, essentially, we'll start with the definitions. We identify the, the items that are covered under the Alternative Energy Ordinance. There's are things like solar farms, uh, meteorological towers, photovoltaic cells, uh, support structures and wind farms. So, uh, any of the commonly conceived of, uh, alternative energy sources that, um, we've been dealing with in the last few years. Uh, we require conditional use permit, uh, to do any kind of alterations, enlargements, uh, of any solar or wind farm. Um, the application process, we identify, we identify what one has to do, uh, to apply. Um, the application contents, uh, we require certain things that, uh, that help give the public and surrounding landowners. An idea of what it is that they're trying to achieve and how it will be laid out. Um, and we've kind of taken into account a lot of the things that we've already dealt with, right? We've already had, uh, two of these solar farms. One of them, one of them has gone in. Uh, but we wanna know the area, the dimensions of the proposed development, the topography, the layout of the facility, including all the supporting structures. The layout of internal roads and parking areas, the location, size of all structures. And the methods of reducing conflict with wildlife, including birds. That's, that's always been a hot topic, uh, issue as we've. Uh, as we've had public hearings, the wildlife resources folks want to weigh in pretty heavily and make sure that, um, you know, animals aren't impacted. Um, skipping over to the next page on design standards. Uh, the placement of alternative energy facilities will be condition allowed in the ag and forest recreation, uh, forty zone. Which is a pretty significant, uh, amount of the, uh, the area. And, and, and those are the areas that we would likely anticipate seeing. Um, you know, some type of alternative energy facility anyway. Uh, we have, uh, standards for access roads, uh, so that they will accommodate, uh, all weather access for our emergency services folks. There'll be a minimum of fourteen feet wide, uh, minimum of six inches of subbase and a maximum greater ten percent. Um, and then we can request additional standards if the physical conditions of the area justify it. Uh, access roads will intersect existing county roads perpendicular to a county road. Uh, we require a reclamation bond, uh, a hundred and twenty percent of the proposed cost, which will be approved by the county engineer. Um, the alternative energy facilities will not be allowed within three miles of the ordinary high watermark of Bear Lake. And within a half a mile of the municipal boundaries of any incorporated municipality in Rich County. Uh, we also worked with, uh, Travis Hobbs after this last, uh, fire we had out the, uh, solar facility. Travis recommended language that says fire prevention mitigation to be provided at solar facilities to prevent fire from moving into or out of the solar facility. A fifty-foot wide gravel roadway that's free of all vegetation will be required around the perimeter of the facility. Uh, the facility will be broken into fifty acre maximum sections with twenty-five foot wide internal gravel roadways. That are free of all vegetation inside the facility between sections of solar panels. Signs would be posted around the perimeter with the name and contact information of the nearest emergency representative. Vegetation management, uh, mowing will be required monthly or whenever vegetation within the facility. To prevent spread of fire. All energy storage systems will require a fifty-foot gravel area free of vegetation around the perimeter. Uh, ingress and egress will require two means of accessing the facility by, by gravel roadways that are at least twenty feet wide. And then we can impose any additional con- conditions that we see that are related to the health, safety and welfare with, uh, to the community. And the planning commission, uh, discussed this. Uh, they, they discussed it quite a bit more at previous work meetings. Uh, this, at our public hearing, it was mostly, uh, we all agree with this. It seemed to be in favor. Uh, and there was no public that was in attendance.
Thank you.
And we had noticed the, um, you know, advertised that we were, uh, having a hearing on this ordinance change. At the usual locations in the county.
Yeah, thank you for adding that the, um, solar or wind farms do not include solar equipment intended merely to meet the electrical power needs of the property.
Right.
To which it's attached.
Right.
Which.
Wh- which, yeah, which I, I think that includes the agricultural users, people that wanna just have a personal solar, you know, a solar array.
They're not reselling it.
They're not reselling it. Or, you know, or even if they are generating a little bit and selling it back to Rocky Mountain Power. I think there's a distinction between residential uses and an actual farm.
One question about the fire prevention mitigation, it probably doesn't even matter, but are there instances where. Solar farms have animals that graze instead of having the vegetation mowed?
Um, I suppose, I suppose that is an option. I don't know of any. I don't, I don't know that many solar facilities myself.
Okay, I guess they could get a var- variant, you know, if they had the vegetation, they're planning on.
Right.
Having it naturally grazed instead of mowed. This doesn't prevent them from burning that, okay.
I was, they were approached, us to put some in and they said if you had sheep, they would allow them, but they wouldn't allow cattle.
Yeah, they'll rub on it.
Yeah, they're taller and rub on it, so.
They're not.
Not high enough. But I guess if there's sheep in there, the, it's not high enough to need to mow, so. That would control it.
And I don't know the distinction between the two. I'd start off with mowing, like you say, if they want a variance, we consider that.
Okay. Yeah. They're exposed cables?
Yeah.
They're sh- they shield them. They'll, they'll push back on the cost of that, but it happens. They can shield the cable.
Cause it's a, it, there's a lot of cables running out there, cause we were out there on that fire or to that fire.
Yeah.
We were just staging because it was in the solar farm, but there was, a lot of this is what you're talking about because of that.
Yeah, was it a cable that just got too hot? Or was it a cable that just got too hot?
There was something, I don't know, I didn't hear the outcome. We thought at first it was lightning, but they said there was something on one of them that they figured got too hot and.
Melted.
Started it, melted or, or something and started it, but. But those could be really nasty, because all of that stuff, all those panels and stuff are toxic. So, I understand, why it's nastiness.
Yeah.
Pure and simple, and you don't want any part of that. So, you know, so. Luckily, it didn't get to that point out there. It was just grass burning, but. And they had Mota, but like you said.
They had Mota?
Uh-huh.
About a week before that.
So, so it would've been worse. They didn't lose any of the panels in the fire?
Don't think so.
Yeah, there was seven, I think.
Seven?
According to Travis, I think there was seven.
It would've been associated right where that one malfunctioned or whatever, it got hot. Would've been something to do with that. Because we didn't see any and, but there was some pretty black smoke to start with. And then it was more light, like the, just grass.
Grass. They probably lost the panel before the fire started. It's probably what caused the fire.
Yeah, there was something.
It burned up.
I don't understand all the panels and how all that crap works. It's supposed to be so energy efficient and not using any amps, but. There's lots of questionable stuff out there. From just a normal person's standpoint, it's kinda scary stuff.
Commissioners, I don't know that this is a public comment, but, period. But. One of the things you wanna make sure that I've learned from elsewhere, if they do use it for grazing, but they don't put it in greenbelt. That by having it as a production source for energy, that, uh, whatever kind of development agreement you have, you. You exclude them from being able to take that and put it on green.
Good point.
Okay, we have a motion on that one.
Did we need a public hearing for ordinance?
Yes, did we not have a public hearing on it?
We had many public plating only. Does that suffice?
Yeah, it was.
We probably needed it in this one.
Well, as long as there was a public hearing.
Well, there was for P and Z.
Alright, I make a motion. To, uh, approve the Rich County Alternative Energy Ordinance if we're in compliance with the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving second that we, uh, approve the Rich County Alternative Energy Ordinance. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, we definitely had a public hearing for it in the P and Z.
Okay.
This is a very bright piece of paper.
Is this poor guy finally gonna get this done?
I hope so. Yeah, this has been, uh, been quite the deal. So this is the, uh, plat amendment. Uh, for Sweetwater Park subdivision number seven, slots eighteen and nineteen, uh, as they are amended. Um, for those of you who don't have the backstory on this, this is kinda unique. Uh, this individual bought this house in Sweetwater subdivision, uh, it had been, I think it's about twenty years old. It has gone through multiple owners over the years. Uh, and for whatever reason, he got a survey and discovered that his. House was actually built on the neighbor's property. Um, and went through quite a significant amount of effort just to get ahold of the owner. Uh, and once the, once they got ahold of him, they, the owners didn't even know that they owned the property or had forgotten about it. Um, anyway, ended up having to, uh, go through the legal channels. And the attorneys decided that they would, they would just carve out a piece of the neighbor's property. He'd have to buy, you know, compensate them for that. And as such, he had to come through the, uh, plat amendment process with Rich County. Uh, you'll note that there's about a twelve foot, uh, twelve foot distance between his existing house structure. And the property, you know, the property that surrounds it, which technically doesn't meet setbacks. Uh, but as we discussed it in planning and zoning, we're going, this is a, an incredibly unique. Uh but as we discussed it in planning and zoning, we're going, this is a incredibly unique situation. The house is far enough off the road itself that it meets, that it meets that setback, so it's not going to be an obstruction to traffic, snow removal, emergency services and things like that. Um so they felt that uh it could come to the county commission without having to go to the variance committee. And all the other, all all his other, all the other requirements have been met, we had a public hearing on it, it was noticed, the adjacent landowners were contacted, notified. Uh no one showed up to give testimony in favor, neutral or opposed.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we approved the plat amendment um for lots eighteen and nineteen, Sweetwater subdivision number seven.
Second.
Okay, move, moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, sounds great, I'll notify the applicant, thank you guys so much, appreciate your help.
They'll be glad to hear that.
They'll be thrilled.
Okay, and he will, I guess he's got the plat, so he'll.
Yeah, he's got the mile already, so he'll run around and just get signatures and hopefully get this wrapped up and taken care of. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks y'all, have a great day.
Thank you.
We'll see ya.
Kim.
Kim Wilson, Rich County Assessor, I just have two personal properties exemptions that I need you to approve.
Two?
Yeah, there were two that were missed. Everything else, if they haven't come in, we had to estimate and bill. So, but these were two that were emailed to us and and I missed getting them printed, so.
Maybe approve the per- personal property tax exemptions that's been presented to us.
Second, moving second, we approve these two property tax exemptions as presented by our assessor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have unless you guys have anything for me.
They don't.
I don't think so.
And I double checked and so far it's just the morning that we're scheduled, we're full, we don't have anything in the afternoon yet, so.
Okay.
But we're just gonna go, you know, one o'clock.
But there could be some more coming.
There could be some more coming.
Right.
Like I said, last year we had a kind of a push at the end, but a lot of them, but they didn't wanna come, we're so far. They don't, you know, they don't wanna come, but they wanted, want their stuff hurt, so.
Okay.
We're getting it and it should be, every sh- everything should be in by the sixteenth and then we'll bring it, we'll bring it to you on the twenty third, but.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sounds good, thanks, thank you. Okay. You guys both left the expenditures.
Yep. Okay, there's how they spell prosecuting attorney's name, M C G A, big G, A H A. Hmm, I would not have guessed that.
M what now?
M C capital G A H A H A.
G A H A?
Yep. But it's.
McGayha?
McGahy's what. The sheriff said, McGahy.
Okay.
If it's spelled right on there, then it should be good.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the expenditures.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, uh we approve the expenditures, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to uh have a further discussion with um our our uh I T person about uh some of the accounting part of this, uh rather than go forward with the clear gov agreement, I'd I'd like to have a little more discussion with our I T people to see if that's something that they could accomplish without doing an outside contract.
Okay, I think that's, I think that, I agree with that.
Okay.
So I would, at this point in time, I I think we would, I would just.
Just table that?
Move to table it to uh another meeting um after we have some discussion.
Okay. We'll do, go ahead and do that then.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Moving second that we table clear gov until we have a chance to visit our I T, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Do you have anything you wanna bring to the commission?
I do, actually, uh thank you, it's information only. Sean Millen with Bear River Association of Governments, but I'm here today on behalf of um Cash Valley Remembers. CashValleyRemembers.com uh is where folks could go to check out an event that's coming up as the name implies in Cash Valley next next week on September eleventh to commemorate the uh the way our communities used to be and uh as odd as it seems for me to to say this out loud, there are a number of high school and college age kids that were not alive during September eleventh and the attack on our country and don't have any memory of the way things were beforehand. This project is the um creation of Jenny Taylor. Uh gentlemen, you likely recall because her husband was a civic leader as a mayor, South Ogden City, um as well as uh Utah National Guard uh officer. And he was killed in the the line of duty or killed in action in Afghanistan, unfortunately. And while on sabbatical from his uh mayoral duties, uh he was in country and I believe if I recall correctly, it was his fourth deployment and uh didn't get to come home. And so his widow Jenny has created a foundation and among a number of activities that our foundation uh sponsors in his name is this uh nine eleven remembers, it's commemorative event. It'll be hosted in North Logan City at the Hanson Family Complex, which is the indoor soccer field. Uh you gentlemen and other leaders that you would like to see the invite go out to are invited to a a an opening breakfast for civic leaders and and other dignitaries that morning. I understand that UAC, the Utah Association of Counties will be hosting its annual conference that day and the next, so I understand if you already have commitments, but the the meeting that morning, uh you are again invited to, you'll see a separate email go out to you and and other leaders in the community, clerk, you're also among those. As as well as um letting you know and the community members that watch this recording that free of charge from Wednesday through Saturday are a number of static displays. What that means is in a museum type format, they've created a bunch of vignette boards of local communities to northern Utah. They have photos and they have a few uh video monitors throughout this whole display in the indoor soccer uh facility. Where you kind of enter in after seeing the flag of fields to represent, you know, the folks that lost their lives that that morning. Um you come in and you see pictures and vignette boards of the way northern Utah was. And then it uh kind of starts from there and shows the events of uh the morning that for those of us that were alive, recall and were gripped by the TV. Um then it shows and it ends and concludes on the unity that we all felt in that week or weeks thereafter. Uh kind of the nine twelve philosophy that some folks have referred to for a number of years, that sense of regardless of our partisanship, regardless of what, you know, sports team or alma mater we may have gone to, we were all Americans. We all felt what that impact was and we were gonna go forth and do great things for our community. After that, and so I extend to you uh the opportunity to invite other folks, um nonprofits have the opportunity to provide free of charge a a booth in the continuation, so you come out of this museum styled effect where you're tunnelled through uh all of these these displays and you can find out about all the great things that maybe a local Kiwanis Club or the Rotary or a Chamber of Commerce that they do to help build up your sense of community. They can have a free ten foot by ten foot booth and and folks as they're progressing out of this can come in and interact with those folks. Then there's touch a truck, you know, everything from first responders to military and um there's some musical numbers on a stage right outside. And that takes place again uh Wednesday through Saturday, all day Saturday. Um hopefully your school district has already been contacted by other members that are volunteering to help put this uh event together. Uh but there's a number of field trips, I know that we're expecting over six thousand kids between Wednesday and Friday that uh will be brought by bus in fifteen minute increments throughout the school day. And then parents and community members are more than welcome in the afternoon and evening hours as well as all day Saturday. So that's it, commissioners, just wanted you to know on behalf of Jenny Taylor and her uh Mayor Brent Found- Brent Taylor Foundation uh that you've got this invite and we would hope that Rich County members of the community know that they can attend.
Thank you.
The breakfast in the morning, what time does it start?
Eight o'clock.
Eight, eight till when?
Uh roughly eight thirty is the program and then afterwards uh those V I Ps that you are are given a tour among the first to go in and see the display, so I would say until about nine, nine thirty.
That'll be serving breakfast at all?
Yeah, it'll be continental style breakfast, but yes.
And that, the, what day was that, Wednesday or?
That'll be Wednesday.
Wednesday, November.
The very first part of the UAC conference. So you'll get a separate email with that digital invite of that V I P breakfast and again, would love to work with you if there's anyone from your community that you'd like to be invited together with you. Likewise to your nonprofits, I don't, I'm not handling that part, but I'd be happy to forward that information on so that they know that that is a free opportunity to them. Alright?
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That is, I am, I'm kinda tickled about that because these young people that didn't experience it don't know what's what we went through, what went, the count, the country went through that day. So that's, it's, that's a wonderful thing.
They've had it for a number of years in Weber and Davis counties, but this will be the first time they've progressed northward and
Oh.
Her hope is to kind of, you know, move it around the state a little bit. Um I don't wanna speak on her behalf, I don't know just what the rotation schedule looks like and things like that, but being able to move it around so that it's
Yeah.
Not as far for kids to see and be able to spur conversations with their parents about, you know, what that that was like, that was all pre TSA, pre Homeland Security Department.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion to adjourn, so move.
Second.
Moving second, we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody opposes adjournment.